Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. In the United States of America, and to the reward of the Constitution, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. A public notice of this meeting pursuant to the open public meeting act has been given by the clerk in the following manner: posted on the board's board and the borough office, emailed to the retrospect and the carrier post. Do we have a poll please Mr. Spindup?
Mr. Dickenson was absent, I'm sorry.
Mr. Dickenson.
All right, I'm gonna have to do this by paper because I don't know if I broke my swear, but Dick's picked up.
You have got it, you need it.
You have, you have the, yeah.
Of course you can.
Thank you.
We're swearing in Mr. Dickenson because he was absent from rework.
Can you read that?
Yes, I am. All right, that's good. All right, Dick, you're gonna raise your right hand and repeat after me where I say "I," you're gonna say "I" what you mean. I, Richard Dickenson. You solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, will support the Constitution of the United States, and the state of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the state.
And to the governments established therein.
And the governments established therein.
And then I will faithfully, impartially, justly, perform all the duties of the office as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board.
As a member of the Planning and Zoning Board.
So help me God. So help me.
Thank you.
(applause).
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, now, if we may please have roll call Mr. Spindup.
Chairwoman, please have.
Here.
Vice Chair, Mr. Alvin.
Here.
Second vice chairwoman, Mrs. Dushin. Here. Mr. Fajowski.
Here.
Mr. Vannella.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Here.
Mary Robbottis.
Here.
Mr. Rineary.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Dickenson.
Here.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
Mr. Fadid.
Here.
And Mr. Knight.
Here.
And also Mr. Bobbottis here.
Six, okay. Six, okay.
Well, wait a minute. Mike?
Yes, sir.
I don't think John, if it's a use variance, you can't.
The D variance, yeah. We have, we have, well, we have two alternates, we're fine.
Well, now, the alternates can't take Freddie's spot.
Oh, we can't spot. They can take Freddie's spot.
Right, so we must be clear. Well, we have six, we have Larry.
You have seven, Mr. Joe, Scott. Dan will take Mr. Verdi's Fred's out.
What's that?
Fred's out, so I can.
Yes, you're gonna, you're gonna be, you're gonna be seated for Fred.
All right, so you're gonna start for Fred, okay, so we have Dan, we've got Dan, we, all right, we've got, we're good yet, Debbie, Scott, Joe, Candy, and Larry.
Six, seven.
Seven.
Okay.
I wouldn't whistle, I was, you know, Matt.
Yeah, you're set, Matt.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah. If you ever gonna have more than seven with a, with a D variance, does they vote up?
Yeah, and we may need just be five permanent.
Right. Okay, we did, we did a poll call. Next, for our businesses, a motion to approve the minutes from the January meeting. Is there any questions on the minutes? Do I have a motion from the floor to approve the January minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Mr. Fajowski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dushin on favor.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Full business, we would like to just take a little bit of time, we're not gonna, we're not gonna try to shoot this too terribly long, but as some of you may know, we are in the progress of doing our 2017 master plan reexamination. This is not at all a hearing about the reexamination tonight. This is simply a Q and A for us to have with the borough engineer, Mr. Stephen Bach, and the planning board members. It's not really anything for the public to get involved in because this is not part of the hearing, so there won't be any questions taken by anyone in the audience. This is for the edification of the board members and our professionals. So with that, Mr. Bach.
Thank you, I won't be long. This is just beginning the process, we left off in December. Everybody should have received updated master plan reexamination book, all revisions from all the different meetings that we had. And also, we have the updated December preliminary investigation for the terminations we need, investigation for the downtown Black Horse Pike redevelopment. So I'm here just to talk about generally the schedule, next steps. Hopefully, we'll be advertising publicly for the public hearing for the master plan, so we'll have that hearing next month. And if everything goes well, so that'll be the March meeting, if everything goes well with the terminations we need, we'll have that following month. We'll make proper notices all affected residents in accordance with the statute. So here is just an opportunity, if you all have questions tonight, same process applies, take a look at the books, take a look at everything, email the questions to the board secretary and our clerk, and she'll, or they'll know the lots, and we'll try to answer them for everybody ahead of time in anticipation of the hearing coming up for the master plan next month.
Can you read the titles of those books to me?
I'm sorry?
Can you read the titles of those books to me?
Yes, 2017 Master Plan Reexamination and the preliminary investigation, termination of the work.
They were previously distributed.
Oh, yes, yes.
Something I have.
Yes, or else, everybody has the December books and has.
I have four of them, so I was.
Here. Only worry about the December books, get rid of all the other ones. I mean, we have books all the way back from May and June, but all those have been.
Steve, we went to visit a few properties, Mr. Rineary and myself, and I guess a couple of things that were of interest to us, and Keith, I believe you met with Mr. Rineary as well, on the, on the Sixth Avenue at the Black Horse Pike area where the deli was, if you, if you make the right on the Sixth Avenue, there's the car dealership there, okay, and then there is the, there used to be the delicatessen.
Right.
Block 47.
Yes, and do we have, Keith, are you aware is number 18 for sale and number 24 for sale as well?
That's the address.
That's the address, on Sixth Avenue? That's a, that's a big parcel if they're all for sale.
Where the, the old deli was.
Yeah, you got, in other words, you got the deli, and then when you turn down Sixth Avenue, you have, I believe, number 18 comes first.
You got 518 that sits up the building itself and says.
Yeah, and then you have the next one, that's 524, I believe.
The.
That looked, that looked empty as well, that was a beige, we took pictures. John, wasn't that the, what's the thought?
The exterminator's place is up for shares here.
I think that's.
But again, 518 is the, 518.
The market complex, okay. The top of the hill where the deli is.
Okay. Well, I think, I think what Candy's alluding to is in the master plan, where I think it's dealing with additional parking and things of that nature, and that corner was suggested for possible future additional parking. And we just wanted to elaborate on that maybe.
Yeah, we're just, and we're just trying to, like, I think our thought process might have been that we have a lot of storefronts that are like so close to the Pike, nothing's back off the Pike, so there's no, like, just pull in, easy does it, you know, like, where Sports Depot, that's not really great because it's just the way the avenues are, but typically, that would be ideal for people that want to shop the Pike if the buildings, if the new buildings that are developed are set back off the Pike. So we were looking for some deeper properties that, in other words, we have a cluster of deeper properties. For instance, on the other side of the street, 201 is Dennis, then there's the post office, then 211 is the closed coffee shop, 213 is also closed, and that was apartment building, 215, 221, which used to be the corner barstool shop. They look empty, there's some apartments upstairs, but again, I'm just kinda conceptualizing, visualizing, maybe if we could have, how deep could that go? I would love to see a post office integrated with Amazon boxes and, you know what I mean, where people could just zip off the Pike, I mean, literally, I had to pick up meds because they delivered them incorrectly, so they went back to the post office, so I had to pick up my blood pressure medication, I actually had to kind of illegally park for a couple moments to run into the post office and get my meds because there was no place to park, so I'm parking across the street with my classers on, where I, I thought that perhaps if we could have some storefronts that were, you know, backed off the Pike far enough, if those properties were deep enough, you know, we could conceptualize that and have people just be able to pull in and, and pull out.
I agree, so, two parts, one in their master plan reexamination, we're continuing to recommend shared parking and additional parking on the whole commercial properties along the Black Horse Pike. That's continued goal and objective of the master plan. And the master plan is generally conceived, there's no specifics on that. And the termination need study, and again, we're gonna be doing an overlay plan of the redevelopment area, so it does meet the standards for the area needing redevelopment. The next step after that would be actually developing a redevelopment overlay zone all the existing zoning along Black Horse Pike and all the way, so, from the study area all the way from central all the way down to second, all that is in the redevelopment area. So it gives that flexibility of having deeper parcels. Now, when we do the overlay zoning, we'll actually put in standards for if you will have a parcel of, say, two or three acres or something like that, then we're recommending so many parking spaces, and we're gonna encourage, probably give them a credit to a degree.
Yeah, how are we going to incentivize them?
It's almost a, for instance, if it's.
Tax bait, tax baitment, or how are we gonna do that?
Well, there's definitely, under the redevelopment process, there's definitely tax baitments that are afforded to the borough and redevelopment entity, and also, there is pilot programs where paying a little tax, so there's economic incentives, but also in the plan for shared parking, if, if they wanna have two or more properties, instead of five parking spaces, 5,000 typical commercial, means that if you do shared parking, you only have to put three and a half or four. So we're actually incentivizing them to make deals with the neighbors so they don't have to build more improvements. But again, that, that's all part of the process that is outside of these two studies, that's the next step. But that would be consistent with our master plans, our master plan still recommends to use of shared parking, especially along Black Horse Pike corridor.
Yeah, because I mean, if we're, if we're ever gonna get, you know, a Starbucks or Chick-fil-A or something to come into town, we're gonna have to, you know, get everything off the Pike and get, like, some of these parcels that are all tiny and just, you know, have, hopefully a developer, and how, how would we, how would we go about, like, in other words, we used to have Bill as a grant writer, how would we go about getting someone to seek out investors?
Well, the first thing we need to do is have something to, to market.
Correct.
As a municipality, the first thing we need to do is have this determination need study, and then the next step is to have the redevelopment plan where we have the overlay zoning, so if a potential developer wants to come in and through their own private real estate dealings, because there's no condemnation.
Correct.
That they want to assemble properties along the Pike, at least they have the zoning and the uses already permitted, so they don't have to come in for a use variance. So that makes it a little bit more attractive, it's not a, I guess, properties under agreement, I don't know if I'm gonna be entitled.
But how, but how they, but I guess what my, my real question is, is how do we make that known to potential investors?
Definitely, we use on the website and also there are professionals that we deal with, one of, one of which is Sandy Kelly, former employee of Kansas County, that does PR stuff, very similar to what Lou Bassett used to do, Republic Solutions, Sandy is.
I mean, I think that's one of the.
That's what the municipality did.
Well, I think that's the, that's the end stage, I mean, we have to get this, also the master plan done first, then the redevelopment.
It's all part of the process.
Then after we've got this all agreed upon from the board here and approved, then I think, I think the grass is, will the municipality take the initiative to hire someone to invest to do this? I think absolutely yes. And we're not gonna go through this whole process.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, we'll just have the process.
Not do that. But the only thing is, is that we have to do this part done first before we start taking that.
Right, yeah, just wanna caution.
I always think of.
If, if, if the, if the area is down through the public hearing process, there warrant designation of redevelopment without condemnation, the next step would be the overlay plan and the redevelopment plan preparation with all the details of what we would envision and the incentives to prospective redevelopment. And then we would adopt that, and then we would write kind of up the government body and request that they actively.
We will prove.
And they actively proceed with telling the world.
Yes. So Steve, part of this project coming together in the master plan would be to get all of our ordinance and codes up to date and attractive enough to bring in investors where they know, and that has to be done beforehand.
Yes.
That we will be working with complete streets, the program that we, we already put in place, right? And also that we've had our sidewalks and curbs and certain other items brought up to date.
Equipping our signage, all of that.
All the things that we. So you're gonna put all that together.
That's why.
Bring it to council and approve, right?
Yep. Well, it goes to the board, the board's gonna hash out all the details of trying to make good recommendations, especially with signage ordinance and other, other recommendations on how to take the goals and objectives of the master plan and turn them into ordinances so it actually could mean something. But we'll be working with the board here, the board then will make recommendations up to.
And that's part of what's attractive to investors, that we're, they're gonna have an opportunity to, you know, have local, so sidewalks a little larger, lesser curb cutouts and things that would make sense.
That makes sense for your redevelopment process.
Right.
And Keith, I'm sorry, Steve, are, are you satisfied with the ordinances now, done with some, few ordinances to go through before we have this hearing? Are you still working on some of the ordinances?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I still wanna watch anything, if you're, if you guys are still working on that.
Or ordinances come after.
Okay.
So, master plan is a master plan document by itself, just to make sure we identify what has changed over the last ten years and what we're gonna do about it in terms of goals and objectives and recommendations.
Okay.
Once that is done, that master plan is looking up at, you know, 500 feet, not a mile, like, 500 feet. The ordinances to make those goals and objectives comes afterwards.
Okay.
That's why we have draft ordinances for signage, draft ordinances for the complete streets, all those things are gonna be refined as a visual workshop process.
Yeah, I just don't wanna yell everything down, so, you know, we need to.
Master plan, we adopt the master plan, go through the hearing next month, the ordinances are in there only illustrative, and the draft, the actual ordinances would have to be fully vetted out by the board here and then for.
My, so for everyone's edification, if you could please just explain exactly what's gonna transpire at the hearing.
That's.
What we're, what we're agreeing to and what we will still have the time to change going forward.
So, master plan, the master plan document really is required in the statutory requirements that I went through this presentation. That is a public notice to everybody in the world, so we'll put it in the newspapers and it's a general notice that everybody's asked to come out, we'll do our presentation of our master plan recommendations, and then we'll ask for public input and board input, and we'll, we'll submit for the board to adopt, the master plan for it to adopt that has amended by any of the proceedings of the hearing. That's the master plan hearing next for next month. The following month, potentially the following month is anticipated, which would be April. The notice is to all individual property owners inside the areas that we're looking at, the terminations we need of redevelopment. So, this is a little different. The notice isn't a general notice for everyone, it's more notice to the property owners, and so we have the, and also, I apologize, there's also a general notice in the paper also, but we have basically notice, we're certified mail every individual property owner within that zone. And so, they're gonna come out, they're gonna hear our presentation, and they're gonna ask the questions, and they're going to have a chance to have their voices heard. Now, it may be that once we have that first hearing, that we may not get through everything, one, especially with public participation. We don't wanna be exhausted, we don't wanna try to go late, but we have a lot of questions, we want to make sure we can be able to come back and answer all the questions. So, it may be two hearings, might be April and May before we can go through this process. That's not a miracle.
I make a clarification, the reason we did the master plan review to start off with is because we were missing some things from the previous master plan review.
Yes.
So that's why we're doing the master plan review. We weren't required to do the master plan review to the redevelopment.
No, 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 no. No, that's why I'm trying to bifurcate that, a little bit, and that's why there's separate hearings nights also.
Right.
You know I've been coming here because we were doing the build processes at the same time. You recall, the first time I came, I did master plan all in one night, and I came back and did the termination need redevelopment. After that, this is more workshop, I kind of did, hand in hand. But the master plan is its own process, independent, and that's why we're gonna have.
Yeah, we're doing that because there are some changes that we wanna make throughout the municipality, that you're right, it would help us with the redevelopment aspect, but it's independent and separate from.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I do believe it's important that we complete the master plan reexamination process because when we're looking at the redevelopment plan, potential redevelopment plan, that's gonna have to be consistent with the master plan. Just like when someone comes up and is asking for variances through your regular collaborations on the application, my assessment always says, and is consistent with your master plan. And so that's what we're gonna make sure we have that type.
Steve, with your experience, how many times have you had to adjourn meetings because of all the activity in the, in the particular meeting?
Fifty, fifty. Fifty seven times, maybe, with public turnout, and there's a lot of questions in the process. You know, it's about.
Would you be looking at a larger venue, the old meeting?
I would not, I would not, because I would have the, I would have it here, and then if the venue is not large enough, then you would just adjourn the meeting, there's no rush, adjourn the meeting, and you would actually have a larger venue the following month. You would open it up so your notices continue, and you would just move.
That's one of the things I recommend, adjourn the meetings and.
Yep, yep, you would open.
Keep going out until you get it right.
Exactly, and I did a conversation with the chairwoman, we are not going to rush, we're right there where we need to be for the master plan reexamination. I think that, that, that is, that hearing should go over just smoothly, I think everything's vetted out at length. The termination need, we're not gonna rush that process. So, we have that first hearing with all the notices in April. We need additional hearing funds, we need two additional hearing funds, it's not gonna be a rush process, and we're gonna make sure everybody has a chance to provide their input as best as possible.
Thanks, yeah.
I see the, this design standards, adopting design standards.
That's in the master plan.
That's in the master plan, and then that's, that is part of the.
You're not adopting, then they're draft.
Okay.
So they're illustrative of what we can do, and that's illustrative of the goals and objectives of the killer plan. So when you adopt the master plan, those dependencies, you're not adopting that, they're just illustrative. So you have, you're gonna have a chance to refine it, but that's a little bit lengthy over process.
But the design standards are just for future development?
And.
Can you think of one?
Standards along the Black Horse Pike order, as it stands right now, the existing zone, just, just on the underlying zone. And again, this is not a proxy, so that's, that's not to be confused with a redevelopment plan for the potential redevelopment area. Some of the things may be incorporated, but that's in the future. And again, those design standards are only draft right now, to illustrate what we're saying and our goals and objectives.
Got you.
And John, have, have you reviewed this stuff as well? Have, have you and Steve been getting together on the, on the master plan reexam?
Not really.
Okay. Well, I, I thought.
I, I trust Steve's on this one, so.
Well, I, I think it would be advantageous, especially, I mean, I think this is the biggest thing this town approaching in a long, long time. You know, we certainly value your opinion as well, you're, you are our planning board engineer, he is the borough engineer.
I'm gonna make sure John send over a copy of both books.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I just want everybody to be on the same page here, if there's any questions or any, anything, additions, attractions, I mean, we rely on our professionals to, you know, to catch things, and I certainly would like to have you involved.
That's fine.
Okay?
I'll make sure we get.
I appreciate that. Anything else from the board?
Please buy me extra copies of anything else, right?
Of the master plan, I do.
Okay.
But I don't have the others.
I'll get some additional books.
What do you think, John?
I'll get some additional books in case anybody remembers. If anybody has lost any of their packages, I'll send additional books with Joyce, so everybody has a copy.
I got the application.
All right.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Bach?
I was, yes.
You have five minutes in the back after we start the next application.
Absolutely, sir.
Anybody else on the board have any questions, or Mr. Knight, you have any questions?
If you have any more questions, I'd be interested, of course. Thank you.
At that, at this time, we'll take a light to you, Steve, appreciate it, thank you very much. Okay, I think it would be appropriate, Mr. Rowan, for us to see Mr. White, for Mr. Verdi.
Are you gonna take over for, right? Yeah, you want to put the extra chair up there?
We're leaving.
Take one more.
All right, yeah. You can, you can, you can, guys.
Mayor and, and John are stepping away because the variance, people doesn't know, it's a type of variance where mayor and the county manager cannot vote at this juncture.
I'm having trouble here, do you have that mic?
Okay. Sit wherever you want, big guy.
There, you can go up there.
No, you can't, oh, you can't, you can't.
Thank you.
Of course. At this point in time, we have a new application, 18-01, it's an application from Dunkin' Donuts for a use variance and a minor site plan. I think everyone has such a plan, does everyone have such a plan? Sure, plenty of them, plenty of them. Everyone with that? If you want to introduce yourselves, sir, or Mr. Ray, which way are you in?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm Lake City Town Attorney, City of New Jersey, here representing the Arihan Donut Court. With me is our engineer, Teal Jeffries, and if necessary, our general manager for the region who will oversee 22 stores.
Okay, Mike, if I can swear, whoever you think they testified to, if they know, John, if you come up, and John, who will swear you, we do.
Okay.
Okay, John, if you swear affirm, the testimony, you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate, but you're not.
Thank you.
Well, again, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, staff and public, my name, still my candidate, and I'm here representing the Dunkin' Donuts principally to an existing facility located on two county roads, Meacham and Schubert. It's block 14908, 301, is the mailing address, as it's an existing shopping center, one part of which has Dunkin' Donuts. And we are here seeking a permitted use, permitted conditional use of a drive-through window, and together with various site improvements, some related to that, and some related enhancements to the site, which we hope will make your argument more appealing to you. There is some limited variance relief, and we understand that those site improvements, those site enhancements, the site kind approval would all be conditioned upon the conditional use of relief, and that's all packaged. You gotta get it all, or you don't have anything. The drive-through, you're, you're gonna hear in just a minute, I don't testify, but you're gonna hear that the drive-through will help serve customers more efficiently, more convenient for them, particularly Dunkin' Donuts customers, Dunkin' Donuts stores serve the locals, it's not a destination by any means, it is a neighborhood facility. Both, our, our client has 18 of 22 stores that have drive-throughs, this would be the 19th. It is the way, it's been ma, not mandated yet, but it is strongly, strongly encouraged by the nationalists principally, because it's the only way they compete with the Wawa. The Wawa is eating everybody alive, but they can't do the drive-through. So say we Chihuahua, we don't do gas, we can do drive-throughs. They do gas, they can't do drive-throughs, and that's the way Dunkin' Donuts will survive. They've done so, so far, but as, as you can see, 18 and 22, hopefully this is the 19th that you see all the way, and we're working on it up there, Black Horse Pike in Belmar, but the DOT owns the site and they're just giving us tickets to the mile. So this is a goal that we have everywhere, the interior size is staying the same, the The interior size is staying the same, the seats are staying the same, we're not moving outside the building. Why, again, we don't expect to gain any business. We expect to be able to not lose it, that's the goal here. Um, there's, but three items of relief. I do want to tell you that we satisfy our seat, there's lots of size, there's zoning with the frontage, the side yard set back, front set back, rear set back, parking, uh, building height, everything. Except for two items, the non-conforming. Not only aren't we making those non-conformities worse, we're making them more conforming. So that's how we deal with the zoning, except for three items of relief that we're here for, in addition to the site line, everyone. The first two are diminished. We are one square foot over the forty-five feet when assigned. Dunkin' Donuts sells just assigned nationally. It's the sign. I suppose if that one foot became a real lagerhead issue, we have to go carbonatic, spend some dough to make it non-uniform. But we're asking for that one foot, because that's the sign that is given unto us. Additionally, we have a one-hour conflict with the ordinance, simply because we open at five, and we'd like to be able to serve the drive-through windows, gives us good circulation, keeps people, families, workers in, from that weather. It involves, if we have a real problem with that one hour, we'll make the folks manage the car. But we're hoping those two, you'll find that agree those is diminished. Here's the one that we, we, we're going to need some help with, because we can't do anything about it. We can't even give in if we want to. And that is, there is an ordinance requirement that says, when you have the drive-through, and, uh, Mr. Pedd says that properly, adjacent properties must have eight foot every bucket. Well, when you see where we are, how we're existing, and you take into account the fact that we're putting a sidewalk consistently with workshops that we've had at the town, and we're happy to put a sidewalk instead of eight foot every bucket, probably in case of more than trees, especially if we've got ice water. But we can't do it, we just simply can't do it. Nevertheless, we met with your engineer, and it's not really a test of a thing, but we're willing to scrape throughout the site, a site we don't have, so those are dealing with our landlord. We're willing to scrape through the site and meet with Mr. Pedd to accomplish a plan acceptable to him, and we will understand that if we don't make him happy, we don't have any proof. I just, I can't help, I'm a, I'm a, so I have to say this. The ordinance says you must have eight foot every bucket for adjacent properties. Call me a pity, but there are no adjacent properties that we can screen. They're both across the street, both across the county. But we're here to apply, we applied, but it strikes me as common sense obstruction. I even looked at it just this morning, and said, what's adjacent to me, we need to be the next to without being controlled. Now, we applied, the zoning officer makes a call, and that calls the law of land, uh, the board. So that's what we need. Uh, I know your solicitor's going to tell you about, uh, the cases and the law, and I, I never talked before about the law, but as a use fairness for conditional use, it's like a, a use law. It's more like a C-stands, because the use has been permitted by the owner by, and interestingly, it's a two thousand fourteen laws, it represents the current state of affairs. So it is a permitted use. It just so happens that we run afoul of an hour a foot, and the inability to have both sidewalks to get the kids out of there and eight, uh, every street. So I'm going to stop talking in just a minute, last comment I did want to make, this, uh, Mr. Pedd, before your engineers issue a fairly detailed, not very detailed report, it went all over. We've conferred with him both, both before, uh, his report, and after, right up through this afternoon, trying to have a meeting of minds, and happy to tell you, I said sometimes in Dave's life, I love a advocate, say, "We will comply with everything," instead of this agonizing, one paragraph, paragraph kind of thing. We'll, we'll look through a paragraph by paragraph if you want, but we're confident we're going to be able to satisfy these conditions approved when I have my clients at all those issues. Say that, with that, I've applied, I'll let you get, get, get the engineer's talk he's this morning, so.
Thank you, Mike.
So, did he, uh, did he stand up, will he get him, Mike Wise? Is he okay? He's there.
Yeah, well, you can move, yeah, that one should pick up, where you can, doesn't that come out? Does that come out? I'm pretty sure it does.
John's moving.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
How you doing, Teal? How are you?
Doing well, myself.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well. Um, this starts a streak, I apologize. I'll also say it's hard to follow up since a great opening introduction. Um, but, uh, good evening, my name is Teal Jeffries. My name is, uh, Teal Jeffries, uh, I'm the principal of Jeffries Engineering Associates, located here at eight oh one Orchard Avenue in Runnymede. Uh, I am a licensed engineer, professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Delaware. Uh, I've been practicing land use, uh, for about the past twenty-five years, and have been sworn in as an expert for this, for this board, as well as many other boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, except.
Why don't you start out by taking the board through existing, uh, conditions of the site?
Sure. I'm referring here to a rendered version of the site improvement plan I submitted as part of the application package.
Okay, John, Teal.
Uh, this is sheet, sheet one point zero.
One point zero.
My one. Thank you. I have one here on sheet nine. Yeah, you want this? I'm good. Drop that on out. Somebody wants a solid chair. Sorry, man. There you go. Got you.
This is called buttering up the, uh, cover.
You need a lot of butter.
The, let me just take a moment just to orient, uh, the board with the, uh, location. The subject site is located on the corner of Eve Sham, uh, Road and Schubert Avenue. Eve Sham Road is along the bottom of the plan here, which is on the southern side. Schubert Avenue is on the left-hand side or the western side. To the north and east of the site are the athletic fields of Tryton High School. Across Eve Sham Avenue to the south is the Gloucester Township Athletic Park, and then across, uh, Schubert Avenue, we have some residents that, uh, residential homes that run along Schubert Avenue. The existing site is improved with a six thousand square foot retail facility that has four tenants, Dunkin' Donuts, um, a one-stop shop, convenience store, Happy Nails, a salon, and a pizza shop on the, our eastern end. And the bulk of the property, as the board may know, is currently impervious surface, asphalt, concrete, uh, building. With the proposed use, we are proposing to install a drive-through lane to service the Dunkin' Donuts, which is on the left-hand side or the western side of the building. The orientation would be such that the drive-through would start on the right-hand side or the eastern side of the building, wrap around the back of the building to an order board and a menu board located behind the Dunkin' Donuts, uh, here on the backside of the building, and then continue around the western side of the building to a pickup window. From there, the cars would, would proceed to a stop sign, the stop bar at the corner of the building, and then exit to the left out into the parking lot. The, to accommodate the drive-through, there are some site modifications that are being proposed. That would include the establishment of a curb and sidewalk area around the building. There are doors currently in the back of the, each of the tenant spaces that we would look to have a safe spot for them to come out onto a sidewalk and not be right into the drive-through lane, and to separate the drive-through lane, obviously, from the building itself. We are proposing to re-stripe and reconfigure some of the parking stalls to accommodate the drive-through lane. I'll talk about the parking stalls here on the eastern property line in just a moment. In the back, we're proposing trash enclosures. There is currently a trash enclosure behind the Dunkin' Donuts now, and the dumpsters for the other tenants are sitting out on the asphalt. To comply with the requirements of the ordinance, we're proposing to have basingary trash enclosures located in the northeastern corner of the site to contain the enclosure or the dumpster for the Dunkin' Donuts, as well as the dumpsters for the respective tenants. Along the drive-through lane itself, and on the western side of the building, along Schubert, as the board may know, that's, uh, a very wide driveway there now that leads out to Schubert Avenue. What's being proposed for the drive-through lane is a, is an island to separate and to designate that driveway or the drive aisle, and then maintaining a drive aisle out to Schubert, so that you can continue to have two-way traffic coming in and out onto Schubert, but creating a designated drive aisle for the drive-through lane. In addition to that, uh, and as, um, Mr. McKenna mentioned just a few moments ago, when we met informally, there was a discussion, uh, in concern about, um, students who walk down, uh, Schubert Avenue from Tryton High School. Currently, from the drive apron on Schubert Avenue to the corner of this new sidewalk. Uh, we agreed to add sidewalk here, which is designated in a little brighter yellow, to connect and provide a walking surface for students coming down Schubert to continue on and tie into the sidewalk at Eve Sham and at the intersection. Now additionally, there are some islands that are proposed at the entranceways and at the parking stalls facing Schubert Avenue to create a little bit more control and direction for the driveways coming in and the driveways through the site. Uh, they're currently proposed to be grass, uh, islands in response to the board engineer's review letter and recommendation of adding some landscaping. Uh, as, uh, Mr. McKenna mentioned a few moments ago, we've worked with the property owner, and he's agreed to come through and we'll, we'll submit a landscaping plan and work with the board engineer to landscape those particular areas. Um, in addition, while we're talking about some of the site improvements and jumping ahead and addressing some of the comments in the board engineer's letter, the board engineer had brought up the comment about, uh, converting an island that we have here at the front of the, the pizza place, currently we show that as a striped island, uh, to a curved island with some landscaping. We've agreed to do that, we'll make that modification. And then along the side of the pizza shop on the eastern side of the building, as you can see here, this is all currently proposed to be concrete sidewalk, we will make some modifications in there to add, excuse me, add landscaping and eliminate some of that sidewalk area there. Now, with the proposed conditions and independent of the, the landscaping, one of the comments that was made earlier about the impervious surface, that's an existing non-conforming condition. Currently, the, the site is approximately ninety-seven percent covered with impervious surfaces, whereas the ordinance allows fifty percent. That's an existing non-conforming condition. We're lessening that, improving that condition. We're, currently, the way it's proposed is around ninety-four percent, with the addition of some additional landscape areas, that percentage will come down even more, trying to bring it into compliance, but fifty percent, we're unable just to, to get to that level of compliance, but we're improving the conditions that are there.
While at the same time complying with parking requests.
With regard to the parking, um, based on the ordinance requirements, uh, the ordinance requires fifteen parking spaces. Under the proposed conditions and the proposed reconfiguration, we're going to have twenty-five parking spaces, so we'll be more than sufficient there. With the parking stalls along the eastern property line, this is an area of another existing non-conforming condition. These parking spaces do not need the setback requirement from the side property line. There are currently eight parking stalls there now. We're proposing to eliminate five and then maintain three of them, providing a, a landscape island in the front, and then a, a striped area in the back to help direct some of the traffic and the direction of flow on the side of the building. So we're actually improving that by reducing the amount of parking in that particular area. And then lastly, with regard to the site improvements, we're upgrading and, uh, making the parking stall and entranceway compliant with ADA requirements for handicap accessibility. In addition to the site improvements, um, in working with the workshop meeting and so forth, we also are proposing to add some additional exterior lighting around the parking lot to increase the light levels around the parking lot to supplement the existing lights, and then the existing canopy lights along the front. Uh, there was a concern in the review letter about level, light levels here in the front of the building, uh, and we will work with board engineer to go through and study those particular light levels and provide the information of existing lighting there along the front of the building. With regard to.
Maybe I can, can I ask a summary question of Mr. Jeffries?
Absolutely.
If I could just take off what I think you have articulated as the site improvements or enhancements. Tell me if I miss any.
Take it off, George.
Got me?
Hit that light.
Never. Why, let me get over there. Is number one sidewalks? Number two, trash enclosures where there are none?
True.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Increased landscaping?
That's correct.
Uh, parking, uh, that is present in the right way and not mind being removed?
Uh, yes, there are five stalls being removed, that's correct.
All right, and, uh, impervious coverage, being closer to conforming?
We are reducing the existence, the, uh, the exceedance, that's correct.
Safe return of circulation and access, you told us about that?
That's correct.
ADA, I lost count, guys, I think it's seven or eight, is. ADA, uh, compliant now?
That's correct.
And that's better, like.
That's correct.
Did I miss anything?
No, I think you fit a whole.
All right, so right in that context, is it time to talk about the variance?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jeffries, as you know, it's, it's our burden proved positive major criteria. Typically, that has to do with the use, but in this case, it only has to do with the variance itself, which is the lack of the landscape facilities. Uh, we have to show either procured, the suitability, a specificity, Mr. Pedd's report, or, uh, serving several purposes of zoning. So let me ask you a first question. Second question first. Mr. Pedd calls that out as one of the bases for, uh, satisfying the positive criteria. Do you find that any of the several purposes of zoning are served, and if so, by how? Or how, if I just proposed?
Well, yes, we do, and, and if I may, let me describe those variances in how we believe that we're actually advancing the purpose of the, in this land use law. First of all, as part of the conditions of the, of the drive-through, there are three conditions that, uh, that we're unable to comply with, and as was mentioned a few moments ago, one is a one-square-foot seating from the menu board, one is a one-hour in terms of the operation of the.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. So one square foot, does that include the air?
The wings.
The wings?
Yeah, we're under that.
It's the menu board plus the wing?
Yes, correct.
You, you understand what I'm saying, the wings are, you know, on the side.
So what was it, what was she here?
Yeah, it's on the.
Four-five inch.
So that's not part of the actual signage, it's just like a frame?
No, it's not. No, no, it is. It's like extra information on the side of the menu.
So it's, it's going to be more.
Why are there forty-five inches?
Well, you're about, you're about forty-five square feet, but the testimony is that the main menu board plus the wings are forty-six.
And how does that amplify? Back to the window. By speaker? How long's the speaker?
Since we're on the sign, why don't you talk about this?
Sure. The, the menu board is located here behind the, just, uh, the existing restaurant, and will be directed and positioned to be angled back towards the driver, uh, coming through the driver. The, the menu board will have an integral speaker as part of the menu board itself.
The testable level, that's what I'm trying to find out.
That.
Here across the street. Actually, I was trying to get at that.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, let's, um, in terms of the actual testable level of that speaker, I don't have that information here tonight, or, or can I testify to that? I just don't have that information.
Do you have the information?
Well, what I can explain with regard to the menu board and the speaker is, is part of the ordinance requirements is that the stipulation is there's limitation on the hours of the speaker is if the property is within a hundred feet of a residential property. We are, the property itself is within a hundred feet of residential properties across the street. The speaker and menu board itself is approximately a hundred and thirty-eight feet from the western curb line, or curb line in front of the homes on the other side of Schubert Avenue. In addition, since that menu board will be rotated and angled into the site and away from the residential properties and towards the driver, the sound for that is anticipated area, obviously, in this direction, away from the, in an angle away from the building and towards, if you will, the back part of the property.
I want to reserve my comments for the public portion.
Um, and, and, is this the same sign board that coexists with adjacent properties in eighteen other facilities?
The sign board that is proposed is, is the standard that is used for the various Dunkin' Donuts throughout this region. Yes.
Okay. Well, along that, that, how many, uh, exist in eighteen are, that's supposed to residential properties, and how many of eighteen are in this, this district? Well, the one I know of is Oakland, because I'm solicitor in Oakland, and that one is harder onto the home, sit back right up to it. It's angled just like this away, just like your bank card, um, and right into the car. The trouble ones that we know about, those from the burgers, is the ones that float out free, and that sound, yours sounds out of carry, and theirs sounds out of carry some fifteen feet, and then it just disperves the site.
The other, the other condition, we talked about the first condition in terms of the menu board and the size of the menu board. Uh, the other condition pertains to. The other condition pertains to the hours of the menu board and the speaker, the ordinance permits from six AM to ten PM. The applicant is requesting start at five AM because the store opens at five AM. Kind of going along with a support of that particular request is a setback of this menu board from the road and from the adjacent residential properties. The other condition that was, that we've run into is with regard to the buffer. As mentioned a few moments ago, it's not feasible to provide an eight-foot landscape buffer around the perimeter of the property to screen the property and screen the drive-through given the constraints and the existing physical conditions of the site. With the drive-through lane on the western side of the property, what we're, or building, what we're proposing on the island is to include or to install four-foot-high solid vinyl fencing to help screen any glare from the lights, cars coming down, the drive-through and turning the bend around the corner of the building. The physical constraints of the site just do not allow us to put in any foot buffer around the property or even in this area. We simply just don't have the physical space to accommodate that requirement with the drive-through, I'm sorry, with the driveway coming from Schubert Avenue and the drive coming into the site. We just physically don't have that space.
Do you anticipate that four-foot bumper fence that we talked about, as we, do you anticipate that being able to screen the headlights for all the properties adjacent across the street under the street?
Well, the fencing is limited here on the island, and it's going to effectively screen the two adjacent properties. When you start to move north, these properties here, they're really getting out of the way or north or out of the direction of the lights for the drive-through as well as the protection of that fence.
So it goes, so, Teal, so the fencing would go from where to where? Can you be more specific? Like at the bend of the driveway coming around, like you see where it's all striped?
Sure, the fencing will go from the end of the island, which is right, is, that terminates in that striped area, up to the pad at the drive-through window.
The end of the island to the property line, whatever, you're saying that the cars won't affect any of the other houses? You know, you see where you said you started it when that...
At this location here, yes.
Back towards Strick High School.
It's not going there.
It's not going there?
It's not going there.
No, no, I know it's not going there, but is it going to affect, are the lights of trucks or SUVs or whatever going to affect?
One of my thoughts was to actually extend that to the driveway or the driveline that you have going around as a bypass lane?
Right, right.
Into the hash, into the Strick Island?
Yeah, that's...
Maybe you expand...
We can look at that. I think we spoke about that ourselves.
You don't say just extend as much as you can and...
Right, to try to...
Because right now, the third house, half of the third house is being fully disposed by that driveway.
Of the third house.
One of, that's something we can, we can work with the board engineer to extend that where we can. One of the concerns that we have, originally we're looking at that initially when we met in the workshop, one of the concerns that came up was with trucks coming around here being conflicting or getting hit by a truck exiting and having ample space in there for a truck to maneuver through. We can look a little bit more closely at that.
Trucks, the trash truck?
No, 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 I went through the bypass coming around and exiting here.
That trash truck's going through there, something like that.
Yes.
Have you even considered, are you, a truck, how high the trucks are, like trucks, headlights, higher than your fence? Let me explain to you, I got skin in it. I love that.
Let me tell you something, I hope the way you feel better about things. Right now, you have to deal, right now, if this word says no, you have to deal with folks parking here with their headlights, that must not be as fun as you'd like it to be, and these folks, the Anadromia Traffic Engineers, pull us, we've got something like, what, sixty percent coming out of here. So when our traffic exits to Schubert, you're getting it. This is a reallocation. We're pushing almost quite a bit of our traffic out of here, even the traffic going down Schubert away from here.
I understand that, but there's a reason, there's a good reason for it. If you came out of that driveway, you couldn't make a U-turn to go out on Schubert Avenue.
Agreed, but I'm just hopeful that you'll understand.
Because there's no, you can't have a motorcycle, you can do it.
Dick, just for, just for the legality of the meeting, you're within two hundred feet of the property. You were noticed, weren't you? You were noticed that you're within two hundred feet of the property?
Right now, the pizza...
No, my question is, do you perceive, follows the notice from Dunkin' Donuts that there's hearings that you're within two hundred feet of the property, yes?
Look, I don't want the best life you get.
Listen, Dick, Dick, my question is, you were noticed because you are within two hundred feet of the property, right?
Did you get noticed in the mail there?
So legally, now what I'm getting at, legally, he has to be in the public portion. He can't, in other words, you can't, you can't do testimony like this because you were noticed. You can do the public as much as you want when I open up the public, but really, you should be out there in the public portions because you can't solicit testimony from these guys who are in this portion of the meeting.
All right, have people out there?
Yeah, that's all I'm getting at. I'm here, how long you thought once you wanted to get the public portion?
I thought I was going to shit out there when I come in, but I seen I had a spot here.
Well, you always come back, but this is over. I just, I just want to do things by the book.
I've been thrown out of a better place in my life.
Here's your hat, what's your hurry? And we certainly welcome whatever questions you have at the public portion, Dick, don't be shy. Not fine, that's why you...
Have your thing, huh?
Oh, oh.
Yeah, I've been up to work.
So, so here. So, Mr. Jeffries, good, we've covered the positive criteria, usually it's a one-word question on the negative, could you address the negative criteria for me, please?
You're right.
Sure. With, with respect to...
Did you hand that around here to Dick so he can see what I'm talking about? You got one there?
That's okay, I can hear you.
You sit there where you can see, Dick. Dick, get on, buddy.
You put it all in the public.
There you go.
Hello, public. With regard to the negative criteria, we believe that granting of the variance and the deviations for the drive-through will not result in any substantial detriment to the public good or impair the intent of the zone or the zoning ordinance. The use advances the public welfare by providing means to use a site with the establishment of the drive-through in a way that is particularly suited and through an adaptive modification of an existing site. The deviations from the requirements are minor in nature. The proposed drive-through is identified as conditional use within the ordinance and the measures to offset the impact of the non-compliance are being provided to the extent possible. The external impacts of the proposed drive-through are identical to the impacts by uses permitted in the commercial zone and also at this location. We're not anticipating that there'd be any impact that had not been anticipated or anticipated by the code and its performance standards. Initially, we believe that the relief requested will lead to an appropriate use of this property without any substantial detriment to this surrounding area.
Okay, so enough of the legalities. Let's talk a little bit about detail engineering. You heard my comments saying in my opening comments that we can satisfy, if you were confident, we can satisfy all of the conditions of the engineer's report. You have the client's approval for that agreement?
That's correct.
And you and the client and I all understand, I'm putting on the record, that we understand that unless we can satisfy all the comments of the board engineer, we don't have the use variance and the use variance for the settlement. That's what I'm saying, all right. You're confident, you can do it, you've talked enough, you've seen the plans, you know what the issues are.
Yes, based on our conversations with Mr. Pettit, we can work through and resolve the items and...
Are they things as small as the species of the plants that can be planted in the areas, that type of thing? We're not talking about design...
We're not talking about significant design changes, it's really a matter of coming in and complying with his, with his review comments, things as such as working through a landscaping plan to modification and correction, some, some text and some detail.
So anything we decided to ask you earlier that I forgot to ask you about, or you want to comment on the board?
I think we, I think we, nevermind, thank you.
That's all right, please, Mr. Jeffries.
Can I just ask one final question? Your charge report might be, said a, a variance might be required regarding the directional signage?
I believe that they're going to comply with the square, square foot, let me make a deal.
With regard to the directional signage, the directional signage is Dunkin' Donuts standard signs that say point of the drive-through, exit. They are intended to direct traffic through the site. They are not advertising signs, they're directional signs.
So you don't...
Yes, we need the relief.
We need a variance.
We do need a variance.
All right, okay.
Is it just the commercial identification on the directional signs or is it the size also?
It's the size.
What's the size proposed?
The size required is, is two square feet maximum, the size proposed is three square feet.
So these companies' signs are deemed something more fabricated?
No, these are standard signs issued by Dunkin' Donuts.
So two feet is, are limited, that's okay, and you're proposing three feet?
That's correct.
So you're looking for a relief of both?
The drive-through sign and the...
The, the drive-through signs say drive-through and have a Dunkin' Donuts cover. So the ordinance restricts, ordinance says, to not contain any advertising message and they're limited to two square feet. So their testimony is that, is that the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through, the directional sign is three square feet, where only two square feet is permitted, but also has the identification of Dunkin' Donuts on it, which to me would trigger more... So the, to allow...
The sign back there as well, back there?
Plus two square foot.
All right, so name of company is advertising. Well, I'm a little twisted between, I'll, I'll listen to the board if it's, if it defends, we have to take a look at it. But we asked for a relief at the outset, but we don't want to blow the whole thing up or cut the bulk of you and whatnot.
If I may, in a case such as this where we have multiple tenants in this commercial strip, avoiding confusion, I think it would be appropriate, appropriate to at least identify the drive-through associated with...
Not for the pizza race?
Dunkin' and not the pizza rite.
There's actually, as you well know, there's actually an hole, hole in the wall.
Plus it starts on the pizza race sign.
That's correct.
They don't want you going in there.
Yep, that's right, so I concur with that.
And it improves on site traffic circulation.
Correct, and getting back to Oakland, like I, I've worked in Oakland for thirty-three years, you've probably, probably seen me, I'm not at all thrilled with the way that stages. I go by that Dunkin' Donuts.
It's a tight stage.
I go by that Dunkin' Donuts every day, and I, I had a brief meeting with the, with the owner and I told him that, you know, I worry about how they can only stage so many cars, how many cars are staging in Oakland?
Between there two and, we look, speak on it and we look?
Yeah.
For... You're talking stacking?
Yeah.
Like number of cars in the drive-through?
Yeah.
Like at a rush hour.
Yeah, so what happens is...
Total, total income.
Right, so, and what happens is, as you well know, they end up on the white horse pike, stopped, waiting to turn in, and that's white horse pike traffic is rolling at forty-five miles an hour, and my fear is that at some point in time, somebody's going to just keep rolling at forty-five miles an hour and not realize that three cars on the white horse pike waiting to turn that side.
That site's probably borderline size-wise.
Yeah.
Yours, your minimum lot size here is six thousand and thirty-six thousand. So we really don't expect that problem. Mr. Patel is prepared to give you testimony about their operating standards from order to checkout, and they're religious about it, it's computer-driven, incentive-based with the employees, and they are hundred seconds, order to checkout.
So what I, what I...
Very proud of that, too, because corporate is one-fifty, and they've got their own incentives with one-hundred.
Yeah, so we got, we got eleven cars staging here, right, Teal?
Currently on the drawing, we have sufficient room for eleven, potentially twelve if you were to bring right up to the entrance of the drive-through.
So we have, we have a bigger, we have a bigger site with a lot more staging area. Now, my other concern is, I want to be sure that we don't have, I don't want any cars blocking the sidewalk, waiting to get in. It's going to have to be something, I mean, I don't, I don't know how we can do it, but that's what I want, is to force...
I know they're the same Dunkin' Donuts in Glassboro every day on the way to work. One day I will pull, and it's, it's a much smaller building, one day I'll pull up and the cars are stacked around, around the store out in the Delsey Drive. The next day, nobody's there.
Right.
What I'm saying is you can't predict it.
I understand that, but how can we prevent them from having a car going across the sidewalk, forcing the children to walk out into the street? I don't want those kids to be forced...
But that's a heck of a, of course, but in our experience, that's, that's the liz of the bailout line, that's way too long the way.
Yeah, but, now, but, can we, can we, but can we, you know how like, say in, in front of the Sally Port, in front of the police station, they have, they have an X there that says you're not allowed to be there, you're supposed to be in front of a cross street, is there any sign?
Do not block the box?
Yeah, yeah. Can we, can we do that kind of a sign, like do not, do not block the box? I don't want the children being forced out into the street to, you know what I mean, to get around a car.
Where would you put the box? There's nothing up here. Well, there's no water up here. Why are you going to that?
Yeah, but the entrance, I don't want that stuff.
Can you do it up here or down here?
Down there, yep.
Once you get to the sidewalk, to the entryway, then there I would put some kind of crosswalk or, or blocking saying that, hey, just like a crosswalk.
That's what I mean, that's what I said, the Sally Port, that's what I want. I want the cross thing, it's like the Sally Port has.
I don't think you'll have, it's a good idea, but I don't think you'll have that issue with the way this is set up.
I like the setup, I like the kids more.
Yeah, I hear you.
If I may, we have to go to the counting for approval because Eve Shamen is, is accounting for it. From our perspective, from a design perspective, I would much rather try to entertain that way they painted a crosswalk where they do not block the box, because when you get into the do not block the box, you have signage requirements, you have to have ample, you said, dance notice in distance for drivers to notice that. Coming into the site, they're not going to pick up on that, especially the drivers now.
That's fine, whatever you're doing, that's what you guys do for a living. I just want something there to protect the children.
What do you think, more caution though, is because that is a kind of drive-through, we're subject to what they will...
Prove, yeah, sure.
The, I have a question. On the, for telling side, the pizza place, that proposed strip diet, you're going to make that concrete, right?
This, this I'm here?
Yes, okay. So can something be put with, hey, I, I know I go in there and I'm sure some of us here go in there, when you come out that door and you go, like people just walk right off the side, like could there be a fence or a rail or something? So they got to walk or, you know what I mean, John, like they can't just walk out of their front door with a pizza and walk to the side where those cars are parked or, you know what I'm saying? Because that's in the line of...
One of the things that will change now is the parking on that side of the lot to be there.
It's for the...
It's moved down.
It's moved down here. So yet you're, under a curriculization, you're right, they become more cross here because they're parking up the side.
Okay, you don't see an issue with that. How about the other side, the dunking sides, like where they walk out? Now, you have a stop sign there.
Right, for pedestrians leaving the drive-through, come to a stop, I'm sorry, cars on the drive-through.
Okay, but as a pedestrian walking out of Dunkin' Donuts, how do you, like, I don't want, they should be able to walk right across in front of the stop sign.
Correct, that's correct.
Are there going to be, like, crosswalk?
No, no, this is going to be raised concrete, correct? That, that medium, that...
Yeah, that's curb and concrete.
So on top of that, can there be some railing, maybe four foot down or something to where, again, they can't just walk in front of the traffic? Yeah, right there. No, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to say, just like Andy is, hey, people, you know people in the morning, they get their stuff and they just run out, they don't care.
Yes, that, that, especially kids, one of the schools, too.
Yeah, gotta worry about the ADAs. We are just getting ADA compliant on the site, I just want those keep, those folks off the site, we're just finally being able to update. So maybe, is this the kind of thing engineers ought to work out, set up draft in our feet? Because we've got the confidence of the ADA and traffic safety.
It's just, just what we're asking for. It's, it's, it's just what we're asking for.
Do they introduce it or you don't think they just...
Well, I'll say on the other end, where the pizza parlor is, you know, the activity there is not gonna coincide with where there's cars.
The driveways, but the drive through, okay.
Because of the hours of operation, Dunkin's operated for, for those hours.
Correct.
Whereas the pizza place will be...
Yeah, from eleven on or...
Um, on the other end, you know, once people get used to the, the reconfiguration of the site, there's no, there's no parking in there, so I'm not sure why...
Well, there's kids coming out.
And that's one of the things that Jill and I talked about was, there has to be an ADA pathway from the sidewalk into the site.
No, the ADA pathway over here.
In order to bust a pathway in.
Where's the, Jill, people want ADA?
It's not on there, but not on there.
Oh.
And that's something that we were talking about.
And you did a letter.
It was, it was a requirement, now where, where does the, that, um, be? That, that's something that we need to work through with the board engineer. We wanna make sure, and the reason why we need to kind of work through it is we wanna make sure that we provide a safe path, uh, with, with pedestrians coming across here to the store or to the strip store, dealing with this driveway, dealing with the drive through. So we wanna look at that, study that a little bit, and then figure out how we're gonna fast accommodate that.
Put a bridge like Chogo had, walk them off the bridge, through the, through the tunnel down the steps.
And then next to that is a, you guys have to observe parking curb sign pickup.
That, that, that's something that Dunkin' Donuts has asked for to, Dunkin' Donuts corporate has asked to have in place for folks who are...
Order online?
Have you ever recall in the, the mobile order to go?
Okay, so they go and then they just pull up there and they...
Right, they have to park there.
But the other ones happening around?
No, he said, he just contacted the...
Okay. And then my next question is, I know when you turn that corner on the drop on the Dunkin' Donuts side, there's some post there, are they removed or do they stay?
At that corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, they can be removed, they're protecting a, a super pump.
Pump, uh, got underground?
That would be relocated back into the sidewalk as the drive off.
So they're followed. So I think you got the idea that we're doing a lot to accomplish a little, so it must be important to us. Gotta tell you that one last concession, our landlord really wasn't that thrilled with landscaping and maintenance, but in order to make this happen and in order, we respect our boards on the bond, everyone wants some landscaping, more approvals, we've agreed to undertake maintenance and landscaping for the entire center. Tell them what we, we give permission to plant, to eat vegetation, landscaping, so we're fully committed to the site, uh, it wasn't much of a... Well, it's the exact point, and that's, I think that's the way it's like, but we're gonna do better than that is to say.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go back to the fence. Now, you called up the fence, are you going to be able to extend it to the end of the strike lines? And four foot isn't that high? No. You know, trucks a lot of times have headlights right around the four foot mark, and let , don't have to shine, I work on this thing, this house.
Well, what's the highest?
Stop at the door, fifteen, five.
The ordinance is, is four feet. It's four, forty-eight inches, so they would need a variance that would go above that.
But the variance don't mean as much as the flexion that goes on.
It's also, boy, isn't this an A front, everything's the same thing.
Yeah. But if they can't put that in, if...
Right.
And there's other, like they said, with the trash truck, we don't get out, we can stop the hallway across there to try to block everything, so. And probably clean up those enclosures situations, those enclosures.
Right.
What's one more variance, Jill?
Well, if it's for a good cause, I mean, you ask, we apply.
I just spoke with, that's Jill, and we, and we discussed extending, extending the fence around the curb of the strike island, and I would recommend that you cycle it.
I do too.
Yeah, just so, just so John, when they get up there with those lights, whoever, how, I know they're only there for a minute, what they say, whatever, but it's just so it keeps...
Those HIDs are great.
I designed, designed fast food restaurants and had the same issue and have been pulled, put a vinyl fence. And now, now, when the driver's waiting and we're extending the fence, so.
That'd be a lot better.
I think that, I think that actually eliminates other problems too. Yeah.
That'll work. Any, well, any questions for the professionals?
In regards to deliveries for Dunkin' Donuts, any other?
Yes.
Is that loading zone, is that the designated area for deliveries or where do they actually?
Yeah, so trucks, for trucks coming in, they would enter in, around the opening here, they would stage the loading zone here, come across.
And then come the fast food doors that are lined up in the drive through? But there's a, there's a bail line and there's a, a queue line. So that's, that has to be an unusual situation for the bailout lane.
Where, where, where for the bailout lane?
This is the bailout lane, right here. Do you, don't wanna wait?
Okay.
Can I wait? Go here.
Almost all fast food's happened now.
Right now, loading parts here, so once you're beyond, we'll say the, the back curb, you're stopping at a little bit, load jam, loading guy is...
It's one, one side.
And planes in the back, and I've been there in the, in the drive through when trucks were coming in, I just have the same thing, that straight crosswalk, and you just stay out of that lane.
It's a courtesy gap situation, and I can't even see if somebody not loading truck or anything.
Well, it's also, what's happened there to the drivers, a rock?
It's a bunch of, we get anyway, a bunch of you.
What company?
What's that?
Head on the...
For this store?
Eleven to this store.
But how about the other tenants? I don't know what they...
We've been on control of those hosts, but until now, they didn't realize, it was a bunch of system up until we came in here, whether it's the dumpster, it's the loading or what happened, right? But there's at least now a system, and they open, they all open to the back.
Do the other tenants get tractor trailer deliveries?
There's a re, they don't...
Yeah, all the trucks.
Tractor trailers.
And the big tractor trailer pops in front of the windows, where's your...
Gotta be a hoopla parker, because I cannot conceive a pizza delivery in tractor trailer.
And does that... So is there a reason everybody else gets served, not a reason?
When it comes to...
And, and I've been, certainly the concerns are legit, but it's existed, that's the way it is right now.
That, that's not changing, really.
No, but we are given a place to go.
Right now.
They got a place to go, he goes wherever he wants. The site is unstructured.
I think you're improving the site for all the tenants, you know, I think.
Alright, I'm, they're, they're...
Any other questions for professionals? Alright, if you're competitive, do you want to go, do you feel that you can go through your review letter or are we, are you satisfied?
I did an opportunity to discuss with Mr. Jeffers yesterday, and then, and he went through and what I, what I said in trouble here, my thing is, was, I need to agree to improve the site.
Guys...
So, I believe they, they've agreed to all the comments in my letter, so I, I can go through, I can buy that in.
No, we all, we all have the letter, and as long as you compare that Mr. Jeffers and yourself have, in theory, agreed to everything that you suggested, and they've also testified that they're agreeing to all of the changes that we are asking for, um, and we could certainly, just so everyone knows, if, if you recall, when we did the, uh, the variances for the vault, when they first came in, I believe they asked to be open until two AM, if I'm not mistaken, um, we gave them a probationary period, okay, to make sure, of course, that was, that's a bar, one, and they, they abut residential areas, so we gave them, um, probationary time, and we, whatever, whatever we said after six months or whatever, and we said, if there are no loose complaints, if there's no problems, if we don't have any people going out and, you know, doing things they shouldn't do around the property in front of the residents, then at that point in time, you will be granted the approval to be open until two AM or one AM, I don't even remember the clause. So we can do something the same here if, if the board would like to. If we want to, um, try the five AM thing, okay, and if, if it's found to be a problem, then they would have to revert to our ordinance, which is six AM, so that's just something else that the board can, um, think about. We, we do have the right to do that, we can say, okay, we're gonna grant you, you know, a three month or a six month probationary period, as long as there's no noise problems, as long as there's no, whatever, no complaints, then at the conclusion of that probationary time, um, then they will be permanently allowed to be at five AM. Just a thought, that we can do that, we've done in the past, it's worked out in the past, um, and it's worked out to the applicant's benefit. We never had any problems, but if you guys are wanting to side on caution, we can certainly do that, because, you know, we are allowed to do that.
What period of time?
Five to six.
Yeah, yeah, for what probationary period?
I, yeah, I think, I think three months is fair. If, if there's gonna be problems, we're gonna know about it in three months. You know, we'll let them do it for three months, if we get a bunch of complaints, then we'll kick it, we can say you're gonna have to wait until six AM to open the drive through, if there's no problems, then it's, it's all good to go.
Agree with that, Mike? Yes, sir.
I, I, it's fair, I have a question. I mean, is there any way that we can make sure the speaker isn't heard at the resident's houses?
Yeah, we can adjust, we can adjust the volume from, uh, yeah.
So you'll make sure it's not heard at their, at their property?
Tell them when you're gonna do it, turn it on, see.
It'll have to be five in the morning.
Yeah, we can, we can program it automatically, it's going to...
Everything come down at five o'clock or six o'clock, it should be.
Okay, at this point in time, um, we wanna open the hearing up to the public, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter, please pump the microphone, state your name and address, if you're heard.
Hi, I'm Angel Dickinson.
Hello, Angel, good to see you.
Two, two, one, Schubert Avenue, uh, right across the street from Dunkin' Donuts, and I mean, right across the street. I look out my door and I look at the dumpster, and I can't say that Dunkin' Donuts, they keep their property pretty neat as far as clean, but after listening to all this, the best thing I could do is move, I should have done it before, because I've been there fifty-three years, and we've seen change after change after change. Of course, I voted against most of the changes, because I lived there. The traffic's horrendous, school buses, and I'll tell you the worst, the smells, the cars, now, I guess there's an idle law in New Jersey. Okay, people pull up, leave the radio on, leave the car running, go in and get their coffee, so we listen to music, we smell the stink from the cars, and it's never gonna change. And I, I, I know they, they're really working hard on this, the best place for Dunkin' Donuts is without any homes here. Now, I have a neighbor on the other side that wanted to come tonight, unfortunately they're sick. I don't know how far that notice went down Schubert, probably not too far.
Two hundred. You're, you're a hundred thirty-eight, aren't you thinking?
We're two, two, one, my neighbor's two seventy...
No, I mean, I mean, as far as the distance.
Two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet, you're, you're, you're a hundred thirty-eight, you think?
But I mean, I can't say that maybe neighbors aren't interested. I mean, I don't have anybody here to back me up, my neighbors couldn't show up, I don't have a lawyer, I don't have a planning, I don't have an engineer, we don't have anything, except you guys, and I know you're trying hard to figure, okay, there's just a few houses, they just redid my house again for the third time, I'm not making any money on my house if we sell it, nobody wants to live in Schubert Avenue, but the property values are down. I understand what they want, and I don't think anything's gonna help us. In the morning at five o'clock, we start hearing noises, if I'm awake, it's not bad, if I'm asleep, I know that they will wake me up, but if I'm awake, you cannot go back to sleep. We have the big tractor trailer, which I don't get, a big tractor trailer that's making deliveries in front of that window where they're gonna do pickup, I didn't know where the tractor trailer's going to happen.
A tractor trailer, John, could you please point out to where the loading zone is? It's all the way in the back of the building.
Your house is here.
This one, yeah.
Cute little house.
A loading unit, thank you.
The best thing is they're moving the dumpster.
Yep.
They're moving...
And they're gonna be closing.
That's what I know. But, two lanes of traffic, I mean, I've had people, I have to look, when I pull out in my drive, okay, look down Schubert, look down East End, look at the parking lot, I mean, I had a guy go out after I was in the street, stay next to me with his four kids on one side, I'm pulling out in my drive, this much space, the truck pulls up, beats the horn, gives me the finger, I beat back like a dog, he gets in front of me and stops. I mean, this is what we have, the traffic weaving in and out, I can't imagine two lanes of traffic coming in out of that driveway.
We all can get the one figure salutary salute, and then the guy went to fight me when we...
I mean, that's not your problem, we live on that street, you guys don't, but you have to understand, we're there. I was there before Dunkin' Donuts, not the school, but when, when we moved in, hardly anybody had a car, I don't know if you all wanted to frighten, but these kids all have cars, so that's a lot more traffic, the school, like you said, the school buses, this smell, if they can't enforce the law with the idling, and I think there is a law about idling, so now the cars are without the idle because we're picking up food, so you'll have all these cars picking up food, listen to the music.
It says you can't idle it, non-island, right on the front of the building.
That's the thing, nobody forces anyone else.
Well, that's a policeman, that's not...
Yeah, they, the cops are there usually, like, when the school, you know, at the end of school, the cops do what they can do.
I called Eleanor Kelly one time, and she had, she had this police remind the guy that was an area offender that couldn't do that, and he opened it, she pulled it back and burned it.
I don't know, there's not much you can do, but I mean, you know, and nice fence would be nice, it's shorter than me, I'm five foot four, the fence is four foot.
The fence is gonna be six foot, and the fence...
And no one is gonna hide, I don't even wanna see anything anymore.
Like honestly, I, you know, I don't live where you live, I live in Runway, but from everything that's proposed here today, my personal feeling is, contrary to what the board may or may not think, I think it improves the whole project itself, I really do, I think it's gonna be less...
It's for the whole site.
Yes, I do, I, I think it's gonna be less comparative on your property and those three or four houses along Schubert Avenue, just my opinion. And again, I don't live every day with what you deal with there, but it's definitely gonna curtail a lot of the traffic, because once they come out of that drive through, they're not coming back towards you, they gotta go across the parking lot.
They gotta, they gotta make, if that's not...
Okay, what's, that's another thing, once they get their food...
Yes.
The windows here, they get their food, what, they wanna drive straight or they wanna turn around and come out and shoot that?
They gotta go out.
They gotta go out on each end.
They gotta go out on each end.
So they have to go out on each end, okay.
So what do you mean?
I, I do not understand.
Can I just ask one question?
Never too late, you must make it.
My question is, was loss of championship verified?
I'm sorry?
Was loss of championship verified?
You have to...
I, I can answer that, as I did, yes.
Okay.
You know, the funny thing is, you say you don't live on that street...
How about the people on the other side of the church?
When the councilman, nobody here said, I would love to live across from Dunkin' Donuts, and that made me really feel good.
You were talking about that?
Well, I would...
Yeah, Mrs. Dickerson, I, I was very concerned about this, that's why I worked the fence up, and I, I think that this plan, moving the loading zones will help you, and moving the transposers will make the property more appealing, and the fence is, I think, gonna clean the property up. You're, you're...
Great, she blessed.
I think it's gonna be a little better than it was.
It'll never be quieter.
No, I agree.
Well, never gonna be quiet, it's never gonna be...
I, I think the way the property was...
The lights are probably gonna be brighter, our bedroom's in the front of the house, I have blackout shades, so, but I, what we need to think to sit down? So, but I, what we need to think this about, or whatever.
The way the property works, is watering one disaster, I think now it cleans up a lot.
And I mean, the kids, that's, you know, that's, that's a school problem.
And they can't, well, and, and the fact of the matter is, the way we, we have this...
And that looks like a fire drill when the kids get out of school.
The way we have this exiting, you're losing all of the traffic that, right now, is about to exit out onto Schubert. That's the law, we're going to, everything, you know, everything's going through that drive-thru, everything's through the drive-thru, which is gonna be the majority of it, because that, right now, they're going in.
And, and that's a better idea than to have right now.
Yeah, I...
So that's an exit...
The problem we have is the ones that are cutting through to a port of life.
Correct.
They're coming out of that driveway twenty-five miles an hour, and I'm halfway out of my car.
I, I just have one final question for, just to answer the, the question. Now, you have your left car on the only side there, and it's pointing directly at the buffer right there. Is there gonna be a, a buffer on the right-hand side, out people distance? Coming out of the drive-thru. That's pointing, the side, the arrow is pointing right at where the parking spaces are now.
It could probably be scooched up. I mean, I think maybe it looks different from the satellite view, but it could probably be scooched up. Don't turn into a curb.
They, they, they would tell, they would tell the band name to begin with. I, I agree with that. The situation is, the original store never stood plenty of board muster. It never came in front of this porch. I've known this porch for thirty-seven years, and I think I would remember it. It never came in front of the porch. The reason for it was, we had just cleaned house, with the entire approval status in here. Around the time, I think you would remember the things if I mentioned them, probably not a good thing to do. But, when they came in and they changed hands, they, they come in with a plan for a building, and it was on a lot, it would accommodate everything they wanted to do. So they were given permission to build, and that's how it got started, and morphed into what it is today.
Well, thank you for asking the right questions. I appreciate that, but, um, unless you did their...
I do.
I appreciate your board's attention.
But I think, both, you said to me, hey, from this plan tonight, do you think it's gonna enhance or be a detriment to your property? Definitely enhances Schubert Avenue.
I guess it feel like traffic.
Not gonna, um, just how overall, you're gonna shade your house more than...
We're not gonna know until it's done, and I don't know when that's gonna be. But things sort of stand good, and I still don't get out my front window, I don't know. I just feel like I'm always my concern, my neighbor's concerned, he was concerned with the school kids.
What you hear?
Blah, blah, blah. I was concerned with us, with what we have to smell day, day after day, listening to the noise, listening to the trucks, listening to the music that we can't stand anymore, and that's it. I live in Runway, I live in Runway like you do. So I should, we should have a voice, I mean, you know, corporate talks. Mine does, that's it, I don't, I don't...
I hope, I hope we addressed a lot of your concerns, or some of the change. Yeah, well, and, and that's what Mr. Pettit's here for. Mr. Pettit has a very lengthy review letter, he spent, he spent quite a lot of time on this review letter, probably about ten pages or so, and, um, he, you know, as you well know, Phil, Phil's been in town a long, long time, and we have a broken relationship between the two of them. They're gonna work very closely to make sure that all of your concerns, and all of the concerns that we've voiced...
Basically, your concerns were ours, were ours.
And that's right.
It surprises me.
No, no, not at all.
It's my neighbor wanted to know, who do we have on our side? I said...
All of us, we're here, we're here for, we're here for everyone.
Angel, they did a good job for you.
They did, that's what I'm saying.
And, Mr. Dickinson, there's how to get ahold of Mr. Pettit. So if at any point in time throughout this process, Dick, you have any questions, you can certainly reach out to Mr. Pettit, he can reach out to Phil, and, um, you know, you have a question, we'll get an answer for you, okay?
Mr. Dickinson, news, brother.
Yeah. Yeah, have a nice evening, thank you.
Turb, I was talking about, we're gonna extend that out a lot further, like I said, right now, exiting that, you can make a right turn. Do everyone see?
There's no turbo, no one's stopping. Right.
No, I looked at that, and third one being just kind of a, I think, a two-way drive aisle, but... I don't know that you wanna enclose that too much either, you create kind of like a bottleneck, so I can work with you.
Yeah, yeah.
And see if there's a way we can look to redesign that to ensure that the people coming out of the drive-thru cannot try to make an entrance.
Right, or maybe, you know, a right turn, yeah, or have a right turn sign, and...
Well, I think it says left turn, no?
Right, yeah.
No. Well, we may be able to physically figure it, to make sure they can't.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this matter, and this matter only?
Charles Buckeye, two, two, three, Senate Book Room, Runway. Uh, I would have to agree with the people up there on the board. I think that it's gonna enhance the property, and I think that it's gonna hopefully make it a little bit better for the people who are living close by. The traffic thing, I use Dunkin' Donuts, I go there. And predominantly, when I, when I've been there, every week, most of the traffic empties out on the east shade. There are people who walk to the side, I'm one of them, because I live right behind the high school. As far as the other traffic, you're never gonna get that to reduce, because of the schools. You've got the kids that drive to school, you've got the school buses, you've got the teachers. But I think overall, it's gonna make it a much better property.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this application? Seeing there's no one else wishing to speak on this application, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion.
I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
First, by Mr. Pachowski, second by Mrs. Gush, all in favor?
Aye. Okay, Mr. Williams? Okay, well, the application tonight is to approve, approval of a site plan, uh, the conditional use, and the approval of, uh, that, like, conditional use with variances. The variances that we're looking at tonight is a variance from section thirty-nine, uh, three ninety-five, twenty-four, four F, where our ordinance allows a pre-standing sign not to exceed forty-five square feet. The applicant is asking for a one-foot increase to permit a, a sign of forty-six feet. They give a testimony tonight of why that variance should be framed. The next variance is regarding section thirty-nine, three ninety-five, twenty-four, four J, uh, which, uh, requires that the outdoor speakers be confined to six AM through ten PM. They're asking that they permitted the use of the speaker from five AM to ten PM. This, the board has indicated that they would do a trial, a probationary period, uh, to, to allow the start at five AM. If there's problems after the, the three-month probation, the applicant will have to come back in to, to address that issue, or it would revert back to the six AM requirement as set forth in our, our ordinance. Um, they're also asking for a variance from section thirty, three ninety-five, twenty-four, four K, which requires that there be buffering of evergreen trees, uh, along this site, and regarding the buffer adjacent properties. The testimony stated, there aren't really adjacent properties, uh, next to this property, that there's a street that divides, uh, residential area from this particular site. But the, they have agreed to install a six-foot fence, where our ordinance, um, provides it, there's a limitation, it's only be a four-foot fence, there is before to be able to, uh, properly install a six-foot fence. And they are going to extend that fence, um, to, I guess, to the curve line.
Around the radius.
Around, around the radius, and, uh, they're going to redo their plan, and John will approve that, make the final say of where that, that fence is gonna be extended to. Uh, the last variance would be from section thirty, three ninety-five, eighteen, F twelve, where, uh, there's signs that they're requesting, if there's a directional sign, is limited to two square feet. They're proposing that their directional sign be three square feet, which would include, uh, proposed copy, which would be in the form of a designation, that this is a Dunkin' Donuts, and I believe they said it was a coffee cup, or some other destin, uh, uh, designation to know which were, uh, for, uh, Dunkin' Donuts. The applicant has stated that they will agree to submit a landscaping plan, but that would just be reviewed, as accepted by our engineer. And they also placed the record that they will comply with all comments in the, in our engineer's review letter dated February ninth, uh, two thousand eight.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Would that entertain a motion for approval?
Make a motion, or a amendment.
Question by Mr. Occamy, second by Mr. Pachowski. Do we have a vote, please?
Our chair, one more thing.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Occamy?
Yes.
Discretion, yes. Mr. Pachowski?
Yes.
Mr. Vannelli?
Yes, with the, uh, are we gonna do the probation at the chair?
Yeah, that's...
For five PM? For a five AM?
Three marks, it's a three marks.
Say yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Hey, guys, congratulations.
Thanks, very much, for all of our, our guides, and volunteers, and, uh, also the professionals.
Good luck, good luck, take care.
Thank you. You are, thank you.
Uh, Joyce, do you know the difference of the variance in three minutes? I mean, we're about to...
Great, oh, good night, everybody. Down my side.
Thank you. Yeah, hold on, get out. Yeah, talk to Lisa, yes? All right, well, ready to run up the speed? Um, we, I'll play a second one. We, uh, just, we just got, we just got done, uh, the hearing for Dunkin' Donuts, and they were very accommodating, the board had, uh, some concerns, uh, that they addressed, not limited to, we're putting a taller fence to go all the way around the radius, so as to shield and as a buffer for all of the residents on Schubert Avenue. Whereas the four-foot fence was a bit too short, and was gonna allow the headlights to shine into the residence. Uh, we also asked them, well, we actually told them, that they asked for a variance to begin operation of the window at five AM, and our ordinance says six AM. So I suggested, and we ratified, a ninety-day probationary period. So they're going to be able to open up the window at five AM. If there's no complaints, if everything works, that's fine. If not, you're gonna have to come back to us and tell us why they should be able to open it by, or they revert back to six AM, which is our current ordinance. Um, and that was basically the gist of it. We, uh, I asked them to add pretty much something like the Sally Port has, as far as not being able to be in the crosswalk. I don't want any cars being staged across the sidewalk, where the children have to walk out into the street to get to school. Uh, they agreed to do that, and they agreed to everything else in Mr. Pettit's recommendation letter that we all have, uh, as far as landscaping, uh, things of that nature, so I think it's gonna be a, a really improved site. I don't know, did they give you any timeframe, John? As to whether they anticipate they're gonna be opening up the drive-thru?
No, they're gonna not.
Yeah.
It's not gonna wait for, it's like, they just stick to the county.
Right. Yeah, so we're, we're probably looking at least six months, you think?
I don't think two, three.
No?
No, I would expect two to three months.
Three months?
Weather breaks, and don't really look. Do you know they wanna get the drive-thru apart?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So the screening was a little bit of an issue, that was an issue of screening? Yeah, well, we, the way they had it designed, um, our ordinance is for four-foot vents, and I...
No, six foot?
It's gonna be six foot. The, well, the HID had lots of some of those big trucks and things, we don't want them glaring over to those four homes. So we went up to a six-foot fence, and we extended it further back to go all the way around the turn. So no matter where those cars are coming out, there's not gonna be any headlights shining.
And there's enough room, there was a vibe that's laying there, right?
Yes.
Well, yeah, Phil and I are gonna work it out, to make sure that the, the delivery truck can get out. Can make it out there. But he can extend... There wasn't, there wasn't any room to put any kind of trucks or anything on that one side?
No.
Nothing, the screen... No, that's the nature of where the buildings, there's no way to screen it that way.
And so it's gonna be a solid file, and I go very nice.
I, I can tell you that talking to Phil yesterday, the owner didn't wanna do any landscaping at all.
Really? They don't want the maintenance.
Kinda told him, I'll, I'll have it go for her. So they, they agreed to a landscaping package?
They're never gonna build, they're gonna pay for it.
And maintain it.
And maintaining it.
For the whole site.
Oh.
So the, so the pizzeria...
What was it, Diamani, he didn't want it? Oh, the landlord doesn't want to, the owner of the property. Yeah, that, that's according to...
And so the pizzeria, and the nail salon, and the one-stop, are all gonna benefit from all these site improvements. Their store's gonna look a lot nicer, you know, and, uh, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a nice site.
We got our side door, Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
We got the other thing, too, is still gonna have to meet with, make sure the sound does with the houses, and stuff. That's a adjustment, I'm concerned.
I never heard that. If you can, yeah. Make sure on that.
So, um, I think I've already, as far as my report's concerned, I've already spoken tonight about visiting the properties and things, and I'm gonna continue to do that, and... Does anyone have an objection to us going forward with the, um, review of the master plan hearing? That's all? Everybody okay with that? I mean, basically, we're still gonna be able to make changes to ordinances, do different things, it's just, it's kind of a functionality thing that we have to do that first, and for a good step B. So, um, if no one has any objection, I'm going to ask Joyce to contact Mr. Park, and we'll put that on the agenda for next month, okay?
We'll advertise.
We'll advertise, everything, like, good stuff. And again, it's not gonna be anything to do with the redevelopment overlay, that's a totally different hearing, um, totally different advertising, you know, so we'll get, try to get through that next month. And, um, I don't know if any other applications are on, on deck for next month, I haven't heard from anyone.
Not yet, I have a couple of feelers at the office, asking, you know, for small things, they come, they went for the garage, they took the size, they were setback issues, but nobody has come back with the application.
Okay.
They picked them up.
So at this point in time, we have, they have about two weeks to get back to us, and we'll, we'll make sure that we don't overload the schedule, um, with any applications in case there's, you know, a good number of people in the public wishing to speak next month. And we're not gonna, we're not gonna load up with any, uh, a bunch of applications. So, at this...
Mayor, have you heard from, uh, the Antoinette's? That, that was just approved, the liquor license?
He emailed me today, said that, uh, the settlement's at the end of the line.
Oh, so it's really settled?
They waited for the transfer of the liquor licenses before they settled.
I don't know what they're planning to do, and the other one that, Ulrich, Keith, are they coming in at all?
They're going to put an access drive onto...
Coming there, more from their...
They are coming from, uh, and coming as...
Antoinette's was basically settling at the end of the month. The owner's the owner of the Headfield Running Company, I think just a couple of partners. No, I didn't get anything, I just, I didn't know, Joyce sent an email.
EB Equities is the name of the corporation that purchased, is purchasing it, that's the name of the licenses in there?
I don't know if they're gonna change anything with the contract, I'll give them a second. And then, Caliber Collision, they're having their grand opening on March eighteenth. Supposedly invited everybody.
We're a little far. We're a little far. It's candy, can I, I, uh, you look at Jenny, you look at Jenny, I have a compilation that...
That was that specific day.
That's why it's a mortgage year. Our taxes can't be up again, so don't forget that.
You're buying the drinks that night.
At this point in time, we'd like to open up the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever, uh, please come forward, state your name and address, and be heard.
Good evening again, Charles Buckeye, two, two, three, Senate Book Room. Uh, up here for two reasons. First, I wanna talk about what happened this afternoon at two thirty-two in Parkland, Florida, at their high school. Um, a young man that was expelled from the school a year ago, he's nineteen, came into the school, and shot and killed seventeen students, and one of your staff, and there are fourteen others in the hospital, some of them in critical condition. Uh, I bring that up because I sit on the Runway Board of Education. I'm their vice president, and we have had meetings this, this school year with our architect, um, about changing our entrances to all three school buildings, to make it even more secure than they are. Um, but it seems like no matter how hard some of these schools were, um, we're still seeing this. This is the fourteenth school shooting in this school year in the United States. Last year, during the course of a school year, three hundred and eighty-one students were shot in the United States in schools. That's more than two a day. So it's a serious problem. So it's a serious problem and I want you to know that this Board of Education takes it serious. We are also going to be discussing hiring a full-time police officer for our schools as well. So we're, we're trying to do whatever we can and unfortunately, things like this continue to happen. And we still have people in Washington DC and in every state that thinks someone that's not a police officer or in the military should have an assault weapon. Makes no sense. And I'm not a hypocrite because I have a hand, but I see no need to have an assault weapon unless you're a police officer or you're in the military. The other reason why I came up this evening was I just need some clarification because you've talked, you've been talking about two plans, a redevelopment plan and a master plan. Can you briefly share with me the difference between the two? Because what I knew is I've been coming to these meetings now for two years and I'm impressed with how hard you people work and how careful you are to make sure whatever's going to happen is for the good of our community. And I go back to the board meetings every month and talk about the things that you're doing. And I think it's important that we understand what you're doing and it's important that you understand what we're trying to do for the children in our community. But if you could clarify that for me so that I can make sure I'm bringing the information correct. I know one is to develop the business aspect of our community. The other is to also increase the use of properties that may be vacant and open throughout our town. So which is which?
Okay.
Thank you.
First, let me let you remind you about the class-three officer.
Yes.
The legislature last year...
There's three levels, class one, two, and three.
Class-three is a retired police officer under the age of sixty-five, who's already retired, still able to be part of the police department. The advantage, of course, is a savings on cost.
The downside of that, because that's the one we're least interested in, the downside of that is that person can only work a maximum of twenty hours a week and cannot have a firearm.
Well, I, did he have firearms?
I don't, I don't...
I thought you could, well, the solution for the class-three is to have two class-threes to cover that. I agree with, I think the legislation was too stupid. They should have realized that the school week is thirty-five hours and, or whatever it is.
If you're going to bring an officer in, you want them to know your staff, the kids, and how each facility is laid out. And to really build that bond of a retired high school principal for eighteen years that came and got his location, we had false bomb scares. We solved almost every one because of the culture we developed. The kids trusted us and they came to us and gave us information. If you have a full-time officer, they have more time to develop that trust with students and develop a culture that hopefully will prevent that from ever happening. One of the pluses, thank God for our school district, is that ninety-five percent of the school shootings occur in high schools or colleges, a very small number. Connecticut was one of the examples, but that was from an adult who was mentally not right and came into an elementary school. You don't have elementary kids coming into shooting. Predominantly, it's colleges and high schools.
Yet.
Yet, yes, that's true.
Every one of my kids are teachers in high schools, so...
So, well, I wish you good luck with the police.
Thank you.
The two parts is the, the master plan is required by the state and every seven years, every municipality and state has to review the master plan. It is a, it's the legal process of us reviewing our land use ordinance. Please, so the professionals help me out. The reason, one of the reasons that I pushed so much for us to do the master plan review was ten years or seven years ago when we did it, there were many items that the planning board had sent as recommendations to the council at the time. Council did not adopt most of the recommendations from the planning board. So this was to try to resolve those past issues that weren't resolved.
And that's required every seven years?
It's required. You can do it different ways. You don't have to do a full-blown one. You can just do a, a basic review. But our process here is to clean up some of the things, look at our, our land use ordinance, clean up things that weren't cleaned up.
Okay. So then the redevelopment?
See, this book, this book was given to me in two thousand and ten. All the little tasks were things that didn't get done. So I'm hoping in this next go-round, we get it done. So when we started looking at redevelopment zone, made sense to look at the master plan, adopt the standards and things like that that we knew we were missing from our ordinance in the past and get that done and then at the same time simultaneously start looking at this redevelopment zone, knowing that there was a whole other process of evaluating an area in the town and doing this study, this determination study that these properties fit the state law, once again, the state law. Everything we're doing, Dave, you help me out with this one, is to, is to try to avoid litigation in the future, that if we follow the state process, we don't get sued because someone says, well, you didn't follow the right way.
True.
Now, remember, we're not doing condemnation, we're not doing anything of those natures, but if someone were to complain, okay, you're changing this, how am I in this zone? How did this happen? We got to make sure we do it properly. That's why I love hearings and see things like that. Where I think it's getting a little confusing is because we're doing both at the same time. And actually, Mr. Park and I were in the back room and one of the things we were talking about was the concerns of the chairman woman that was that maybe we need to make sure things get done properly and do things cleanly. So obviously, we're only going to be doing the master plan, public hearing next, next month. And then one of the suggestions was to get these ordinances, these standards kind of cleaned up a little bit, maybe to keep this process somewhat segregated so that we're pretty much done the master plan before we get too involved with the redevelopment zone. But the redevelopment zone, once again, is a study that allows us to do an overlay zoning of what we can potentially have in the future and gives Mayor and Council the ability to incentivize development in that area.
Is that redevelopment is predominantly the Black Horse Pike, Clemmersbridge Road?
No.
No?
It is only the Black Horse Pike.
Only the Black Horse Pike.
From, from the Turnpike to Clemmersbridge Road, it goes as far back as the Pike and to Central Avenue, as long as this study proves that that area is, is allowed. And then all it will mean is the underlying zoning does not change. People's homes will still be their homes. If they want to put a dish on, they want to put a fence in, they'll still come to the zoning officer and get it done. All it does is it allows a developer, a business owner, anyone, to look at their property or to cobble together a bunch of pieces of property, come to this board, or excuse me, come to the council and say they want to do something with that property based on the standards that are adopted and then look at...
And then they would have to convince the homeowner, that is.
Right, that's hard.
They're all on board, they need to look for...
Yeah.
All right, just a couple of points, just to keep all of you abreast of what's going on. Over the last three or four years, we've done a number of things in the district. We, we have eight hundred and forty students, pretty consistent every year, and we usually have ten to twelve, have our going out to special schools where they have developmental problems, emotional problems that we can't handle. We used to pay for the busing and it was running us tens of thousands of dollars a year just for the busing. We went out and bought a small bus and a full-size bus. Now we do our own busing. We, we are saving annually almost sixty thousand dollars a year in change because of what we're doing. We opened up this past summer, and we're going to continue to do it, an entire summer program for children. You know, we live in a time where mothers and fathers both have to work and we used to run a small summer program half-day. We now have, we still run that summer program. We work along with the RWA, with some of the things that we offer as far as athletics, but we also had almost like a daycare that parents would pay probably about forty percent of what it would cost them if they went to a private facility. And we also supply breakfast and lunch as well as educational experiences for the kids.
You guys partner up with the, with the summer rec program? Yes. In VisiPal, yes.
Uh, we're, our, our technology person in the past, I guess, two years now, works with the Borough Hall on some of your technology things to share service, to help each other out. When we had our board administrator leave suddenly because the superintendent left, we took our time and we rethought things and what we did was instead of bringing in a full-time board administrator, well, I don't know, part-time board administrator was also half-day board administrator, half-day curriculum development, we have been able to eliminate positions that were full-time and we saved another fifty thousand dollars there. Yet we're not reducing the quality of the education we're trying to give to our children in the run of the year. We also, in the past few years, we have applied to become a sustainable green school district. Last year, we reduced paper consumption by thirty percent. And when you're talking about our school district, that's a significant savings in money. As we convert our light fixtures in the buildings, we are going from incandescent to LEDs. So we're making a lot of changes that way to try and cut debt.
So...
There you go. I have presented the proposal to our board that is being taken to our architect. We're trying to think how we could generate electricity for the district instead of paying for electricity that we do now. The idea I presented, I got the idea from seeing West Stepford High School do it, from Lutions doing it. Where the Marywall School is, I proposed to the board to put a roof over that parking lot, hide up to the buses, home roof, delivery trucks, put solar panels on that roof. If we be, if we get approved as a sustainable green school, we will qualify for a grant that will pay for seventy-five percent of a project like that. We wrote a grant that replaced all the windows in Downing and Bingham School a year and a half ago. So we're trying to do things that don't increase taxes and make it a safer environment as we're doing now to change these entrances and build. You have to be wrong and you're viewed through a video camera, but there's more we can do. And we, we have got the arch, our architects looking at that and have got our supervisors. And our, our plan is to do that this summer with all three buildings. But those are some of the things that we're trying to do as well as trying to bring the best educators we can to work with our kids. Doug, I've enjoyed coming to these meetings and I'll continue coming and keep up the great work.
We appreciate your work.
Thank you, Charlie.
Would they have metal detectors? Are they like, too expensive? I mean, how much is a labor?
Hi, my name is Jackie. I live at two thirteen Forest, right behind Trenton. I currently, I, I own a dance school and I was in Hatton Heights and my lease ended at the end of the year, so I shut doors due to me and my landlord and his, you know, lack of doing what I needed to be done. So my question that I'm coming here, I've been in Runway for twenty-two years now, so I'm trying to relocate my dance school and seeing as though I've been driving through and realize how much vacant spots there are now compared to when I grew up and the kids really don't like, these dance schools done, I don't know how long it's been gone. Like, there's nothing really in here for the kids besides the karate school down by the jet. So I'm just trying to figure out the zoning code that I would need, like, as far as be looking to lease a building or to buy a building, what I should be looking for as far as like zoning. I don't know what it would go under.
Mr. Knight is our official, sorry, city officer and he's very, very helpful. If you could maybe just reach out to Keith at some point in time, he can probably give you a tax back or something of, you know, what is approved. Right in the hallway is a zoning map.
Yes.
And on that map, it shows you Highway Commercial, which is where the dance studio could be, anywhere along the Highway Commercial. General Office, I don't believe, you know, not in General Office without a variance, but you could come in and you could, if you found a piece of property in the General Office that would work, you could come to the board, you just have to prove it's a, it's a use variance at that point, that, you know, it would be okay. One of the concerns, of course, with the dance studios is the cars and I guess how many people would, would, you know, gather that occasion.
What I suggest you would do is look at certain properties in town and if you're inclined to possibly lease it, we'll contact you and we're going to have to review it with you.
Okay. Have you decided to buy a piece of property and fix it up? We already offer away now five-year tax haven't, so if you were to buy property and fix it up, that increase, which remember in New Jersey, we penalize you for fixing things up. So the increase in the taxes would be reduced by eighty percent and then twenty, and then we go off twenty percent for any...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knight.
Thank you, Jackie. Wish you a lot of luck. We hope to see you in town.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, second.
Mr. Oklin, second. Mr. Vannelli, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, you know, you're...